Protest to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we're coming before you today, grateful once again to come to you in prayer and come before your throne. Father, I ask that you allow everyone in here a measure of wisdom as we go about the business of the city of Tallulah. And I ask as we leave this place tonight that you give traveling grace to everyone so that they can make it home safely to your family, their families. These things we pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Gerald, roll call.
Okay, well, here. Danny?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Scott?
All right, before we go on to public comments on the agenda, I wanted to talk with you guys about the government shutdown and how it is affecting the city of Tallulah. We do have two grants with two federal entities, with USCAA and with EPA. Both of those agencies are front loads right now, so there will obviously be no movement on the USCAA, I will report with that. But with our brownfield grant, that is also being held right now, so as soon as the government opens back up, we can start that again. As it relates to individuals who get SNAP benefits here in Madison Parish, I did talk with the food bank this morning. The governor is working on something in case the federal government doesn't come back, so that there'll be some sort of food giveaway for individuals that receive SNAP. And so they have to show that they do receive those to, you know, to give whatever it is that he gives out. So we'll continue to work with the food bank on that and I'll let you guys know what will happen so that we can get the information out to everyone.
Okay, number four. Any public comments on the agenda? Okay, no public comments on the agenda. Approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2025, regular meeting?
No, we got some corrections.
Are there any changes or corrections?
Yes, when we got to the, when I say the motion to second the pool, the September 25th meeting with corrections, corrections fail long, but also it did not carry, the man has to be outboarded against it. And I said until the corrections were made, and one correction I want to be adding to the minutes was the fact that the mayor did not put her letter into the attorney general in the previous minutes from the previous meeting. And so I wanted that to be in there, and also in the next paragraph, I see one, two, three, four, five, six, there was David Patterson, where it starts off, you didn't put in that what he said that that was gonna be, they had a five-year plan for doing the lead inventory for pipes. So that was left off.
Okay, Gerald, you have those changes?
Yeah.
I believe that the minutes, I know that we have put in the newspaper those minutes and the letter to the attorney general's office. So we need to make sure that they are part of those minutes and make sure that the corrections that you have are added to that.
And now another one, the last paragraph on the first page, there's the senator Pamela Green, says she provided an update on issues surrounding the ordinance number and orders of adopt a plan of reapportionment. She said that the ordinance should be filed, but it failed to accomplish what it was drawn up to do. So I'll make sure that's included in there. She said to file the ordinance, but it failed to accomplish what it was drawn up to do. And I raised objection because our previous city attorney was the one, according to, Mr. Odom was the one that wrote the ordinance.
Okay, do we have any other corrections to the minutes?
So I want to make sure that that is included in those minutes, like those corrections be added.
Do you have any other corrections to the minutes? So I think what we should do, council, if you all want to approve the minutes with those corrections, that we set a time that those are sent to you also that you can see all of the corrections prior to those going to the newspaper.
Well, you know, mayor Lewis, prior to when we first took the city, we was getting the minutes back, if we had a meeting on Thursday, we would get them back that Friday morning with the corrections, or either Monday and everything has changed to the very next day or that Monday after that. So now we're not seeing those corrections at all.
So I will tell you that I was making those corrections behind you guys, so Gerald, I think going forward, what the council would like to see is the necessary changes made, if we can get those back to them as soon as possible, maybe the next day or by that following Monday.
Okay, all right, so with that, is there a motion to approve the minutes with the necessary corrections?
There.
All right, we have a proper motion by Ms. Day, second by Ms. Houston, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Mayor Lewis, let me say something, this is what we have to do, okay? I know Mr. Odom is not gonna type those minutes.
Mr. Odom is doing the minutes.
You know that I'm not gonna type those minutes?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Those minutes, it takes me a lot longer than it does anybody else.
I'm gonna go ahead and pull some pretty prior minutes and know who's typing them.
Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda, Miranda Brown, can you give us a section eight report, please?
Yes, good evening, good evening, I'm there. She and his ass, our council members, city attorney and clerk. Section eight would like to give you an update, which is stated on your attachment that's included. The previous, I previously reported that the hood short fall prevention team and I were working on submission process for half funds that would prevent us from having to terminate any participating clients. So that half set aside funds has been approved and will be dispersed to our agency. And I did include the email that was received. Number two, I heard contingency plan with the possible lapse in appropriations, those were things related to our half, or our set aside funds to prevent the termination of the assistance. So I just included that in the package and that was received after our last meeting, so I just included those as well. The possible lapse in appropriations, that was just an outline of how the hood program will operate or will continue to operate in the case of us being affected. We still have currently fifty-four participants because we are in a standstill, so there are no participants being added to the program. No vouchers are issued, so that's what we currently have. Our monthly half to date, as of today, for our October is twenty-four thousand, or was twenty-four thousand, five hundred seven dollars, forty-seven cents. Are there any questions? That includes my report.
Any questions from the council, anybody in the audience? This time we'll entertain a motion to accept the section eight report.
A motion to accept the section eight report.
A motion by Ms. Day, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Scott, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda is discussion of next steps for boundary maps for the city of Tallulah. We had a long discussion about this at the last meeting, I think we all agree that there's some work that needs to be done. I think at this time, the council, you guys need to make a decision on how you want to move forward with this, whether it be going out for request for qualifications from different surveyors or continuing to work with Mr. Messenger. That's gonna be up to you all. What I'd like to do is give each one of you an opportunity to say, you know, if you have any comments on this particular matter, then there'll be time for questions from the council and from the audience and attorney, if you have anything to chat about. Mr. Scott, would you like to start?
Assistant? I'm all in favor of what you're doing and the correction that we made, I'm all for it, I don't have any problem.
Ms. Houston?
It has been a can, it has been kicked down the road. I'm super wanting to get this resolved and doing it the legal way, trying to find out what can be the legal way to get it corrected. I'm all in support, a big supporter about getting these lines straight. This here, I'm also in support of it.
Ms. Day?
Okay, I have a question, when the ordinance was sent to the court office, what was the reason that you would just file? So the next thing is to find out, should we go with Messenger or someone else? So what's the next step to do this? Get someone to do the boundaries?
Right, so I think we all can see Mr. Doughty's email, there are several parcels, pieces that need to be done. What we need is for the census map and the boundary map and the survey information all to match. Obviously, we're gonna need some help with that, whether that help comes from some other surveyor, whether it's or Mr. Messenger, whoever it is, you know, there's gonna need to be some, you know, some help done with that, so.
So do you want anybody to know how many, you know, what surveyors are available, you know, does anyone do surveyors that, that have Messenger?
If you all decided to go out for request for proposals or request for qualifications, you would work through the maps, they would help us through that, yeah, to get the word out to regional, probably regional surveyors, to make sure that, you know, that we can get the widest reach on it. I will say, no, I'm sorry, go ahead. I will too, yes.
Okay, you think we would go with the map and they would send us the people who certified to do this?
No, I'm saying if you all decided to go with request for proposals or request for qualifications to see if you'd like to go with a different entity. The maps could assist us with that, putting the package together, getting it out there, as they've done with us with other items.
Well, I think we need to go with the map to see, you know, just to get an estimate, you know, to whether what Messenger, whether that pipe is competing, you know, competitive or not.
Cast no less?
I'm sorry, let me say what you got, cast no less?
This is my concern, first of all, has anyone reached out to the census bureau to see what map they used to make the determination of the things which they said? See, in order to correct something, you got to first identify the property, if the census bureau has surveys, they had to have a map, nobody said what map they used, for some reason, nobody knows that. So it's because I'm quite sure they had to go to some type of political entity to get a map. So has anyone reached out to the census bureau to see which map they used to determine the things that needs to be determined? I know it's gonna be a no. My next question is, I, my next statement, they don't have a question. I have never seen an ordinance get filed that does not have an effect, I've never seen it before in my life. And for us to get that type of advice bothers me. I've never seen it, because according to the Larson Act, anytime a council approves an ordinance, it becomes law unless it's vetoed by the mayor within ten days of receiving it. He can either sign it or disapprove of it. If he does not sign or disapprove of it, it goes into effect automatically at the end of the tenth day. There's no such thing as an ordinance not having an effect, no such thing. So when you voted on the ordinance, you also voted on a map to accommodate the different changes that was mentioned in there. So I think the first step that we can have alternative to do is reach out to someone from the Department of Justice and have to see if they can send someone here to talk to us about the legal steps. Because I don't like the way information goes. So we need to have someone from the Justice Department, from the federal government, because Mr. Odom is our VAS person, is the boundary intersection survey person. So he's responsible entering all of our boundaries, political divisions, because we've been using those same maps to determine how we gonna run for office as city council people. And we go to the same areas. So I think the first step is, we need to contact the Justice Department to see what map they use. Then find out why we have not been updating our maps accordingly. Because we voted on updated maps for the past twenty, thirty years, and if they've not been updated, then anyone that has served on this council during that time has voted on ordinances that brought in updates, have committed malfeasance in office, for failing to acknowledge what you voted on. There's no defense about somebody. And I think that we should not no longer go along with Mr. Messenger. If we're gonna have Mr. Messenger, I think we need to do an independent surveyor to come in, who has no ties to anything that's related to Tallulah or Massapeurs. Because Doug Mitchell and Mr. Messenger, they have connections into, someone played football that's a little cat, and I looked it up. So they knows the ins and outs of what needs to be said. So I think those individuals, they play football with some of our husbands and all that kind of stuff. So I think we need to go and get an independent surveyor to come in and begin to look at our boundaries. That's, I think it's bottom line.
Anything else, sir?
I hope that the council would agree to an independent survey, we're concerned about getting it right. Let's get somebody who has not been here before to come in and look at everything that we got, because we can go out there and have some ordinances, we might have a bunch of maps that we got, that we got to get them voted approved on, that somebody on, they have our first time on the council. So everybody else has voted on reapportioning maps, everybody else signed their taxes. So there's things that you all have voted on, and we just found out why those are not taking effect and it's there until we.
Okay, are there any comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Yes, I have a question, what objective did the ordinance fail to reach?
So the ordinance that was passed was attempting to annex property and include property and attach to it a census map, which did not include property that had been properly annexed into the city of Tallulah. And so what I provided to the council, but what none of you have, is a 2021 presentation on how to do municipal annexations in Louisiana and using a census data map is not included, it's not a method. And so that's something that I agree on with the former city attorney, Dave Doty, and if you recall, last week, our own city judge actually echoed those sentiments. In order to annex property, there's five ways to do it, that's by statute in Louisiana, that's the only way to do it, and attaching a map of a census data boundary is not the same. Now, I agree with what Councilman Wells said earlier, I think it's important to reach out and find out from North Delta Regional Planning, you know, where this map came from. You know, if there's an unrecorded instrument that's out there, that's not been recorded in Madison Parish Department of Courts Office, you know, that would be interesting to know, okay? But in order for a surveyor to do their work, or any title examiner or abstracter, is a hundred percent based on what's filed in the public record in the clerk of courts office. That's how you make a transfer of a title. Now, even a transfer of title will not necessarily affect whether or not you're actually in the city of Tallulah's boundaries. If you have a piece of property that's outside of what is legally defined as the city of Tallulah, the only way to make it a part of the city of Tallulah is by annexation. And so that's gonna have to be step one in order to pick up any new property and eventually, and I think this is the crux of the issue that everybody wants to get to, additional voters and taxpayers. And of course, that's something that the city needs to be mindful of, and annexation has got very stringent requirements. Not only does that property need to be legally described, which is why the conversation keeps returning to surveyors, in order to determine who you're trying to have annexed, but you have to have a majority, it's more than a majority, I gave the percentage at the last meeting, but you have to have a certain percentage of the registered voters there, and you have to have a certain percentage of the ownership of the assessed value in that area. So these, these are not minimal requirements, and they all have to be followed, and the city's going to have to affirmatively take a vote to take those steps and do that, but having legal descriptions is definitely step one, step one.
Okay, so basically, Hill's apartments, because it was not annexed in the city limits?
That's right.
So basically, that's why they are not allowed to vote in the city election, right?
That's right.
So coming up in the next municipal election, they will not be able to vote?
I can't see any method by which the city could get that annexation done in time.
Before that time, right?
That's right.
So what about eminent domain?
Eminent domain? I don't believe eminent domain is available for annexation.
So if we're providing service, city service like water, to a particular entity, so the city can't take a step and say, since we're providing you water or utilities, that we no longer allow you to choose what not to be part of the city, this man, he doesn't want to be a part of the city, the owner?
You can't, you can't change your boundary by deciding you no longer want to be a part of the city of Tallulah, you can't do that. But you similarly, as a city, can't unilateraly to decide to annex somebody either, that's why those statutes exist. You have multiple citizens of the parish of Madison who are not city of Tallulah residents, who you provide fire, water, and other services to, who you cannot make citizens of the city of Tallulah without doing so by annexation. It's simply the law, and I know that frustrates you, Councilman Wells, because you have people that you know want to be a part of the city, and that's an important imperative for you as a council person and for the city as a whole, that's a potential increase to your tax base. But the fact of the matter is, you just, you just have to do it correctly. Now, when y'all go about the process of however you decide, whatever you want to decide, is to survey or some legal descriptions, I suggest that you all go back and review that letter, which I again sent to all of you, because what you'll notice is that abstracts were done. You know, attorney David Doty had abstracting services performed, for those of you who don't know what that is, abstracting services is where a land title professional goes to the courthouse and pulls the historical records on land data information. All of the deeds that line up in the chain of title that bring the title current to the current owner, meaning the city of Tallulah. Okay, so all of that information would have been transmitted to Mr. Messenger in the performance of the duties that he was doing. That's the right information in extent, okay? That information went to Mr. Messenger, and that's where we got the legal descriptions for the properties that were outlined in that letter. Presumably, that would be the properties that are owned by the city of Tallulah and the properties that were sought to be annexed by the city of Tallulah. And from that information, a surveyor would create a map from those legal descriptions. Now, legal descriptions sometimes change every time we're approved, as I like to say. So those legal descriptions could be used to make a map by entering in that data and doing an overlay on an area, I'm not gonna overlay with this, this is really more of a surveyor's role. But you can update them to show exactly where, you know, pins are and locations and create a boundary of the entire city or each individual tract based off of those descriptions. And so what you need to be mindful of is the descriptions that we want, in addition to having an overall updated map of the city of Tallulah and its boundaries, are individual descriptions of the properties sought to be annexed. Because when you file that petition in court, okay, with all of the information that's required to do that annexation, we need to be properly describing the area that's sought to be annexed, because we do not want to have another problem with our boundary map, our city map, our census data map, all not lining up with one another. Does that make sense?
Okay, I got that.
Hold on, hold on, sorry.
I have a question. Let's say, since we're providing services to a particular area, utilities, can the city say, since we're providing these services to you, we're coming to make an agreement with that particular party, in order for us to continue to provide those services, we want you to become a part of the city as a voluntary agreement?
No, you can't circumvent the statute, and I'll tell you why, Councilman Wells, this, the hierarchy of laws is as follows, you know, you mentioned the Department of Justice earlier, that's federal. Federal laws trump state and local laws, and those trump local laws. And so if the city were to pass an ordinance that was in conflict with the state statute in Louisiana, the state statute would control.
No, I didn't say an ordinance, I said.
Or a property developer agreement, any kind of agreement you want to make, it's got to comply with Louisiana laws.
So the city of Tallulah and a property owner cannot come to an agreement with each other?
Not, not if it doesn't comply with Louisiana state laws. So if you seek to have an agreement, let's say with somebody who lives outside of the city limits, and because we're providing you water and fire protection services, and you want to be a part of the city of Tallulah, we're just gonna decide that you're now a part of the city of Tallulah. Well, you're in violation of, you would be in violation of the exact statutes that have been put forward in this municipal annexation guide that I provided to you. And you'll, if you review that guide, and that's why I gave it to y'all, so everybody could study it, there actually are a whole list of common pitfalls that other municipalities have fallen into traps over, and that's likely one of them. Desire, desire is not enough, intent is not enough, you know, no matter how well founded the desire and the intent is, it's just not enough, we have to go through the annexation process. I didn't make the laws, if you don't like it, call the legislators that represent you and let them know that you want to see a change in it, and you don't care for it as citizens, that's what we all have the right to do. But I'm tasked with the responsibility of telling you the legal vehicle by which to get there, and that's it.
Ms. Jackson?
Messenger, he's the surveyor, so is he, is he part of the city of Tallulah, or is he just, so what's his, I know he said something about six thousand dollars deal one time, is he, he has more work to do?
So here, and here's what I was gonna say, when, sorry, I interrupted you, he did give a quote to the city, I think that quote, if you all were to go with Messenger, it needs to be a little bit more detailed to show exactly what he's going to be doing, to make sure that everything that we need done is going to get done. So he did give a quote, it was sixty-five hundred dollars, you know, here's what I would do, but I don't think it was detailed enough.
Okay, so what has he done so far?
So what I know that's been going from review of that letter, which everybody in the council has copied, and I think it was in the packet last meeting, went through nineteen ninety, abstracts four on all of the properties that are detailed in that letter, those properties that are being sought to be included, or that where the census data map doesn't match up with the actual boundaries. And so what he has been consistently asking for from the city is, if you want me to draw a map that includes these properties, I need a matching legal instrument that shows me that the city actually has annexed these properties. I'm happy to do the work for you, but it doesn't exist in the public record, you know, so what the next step would be for him, or the next surveyor would be to say, okay, we recognize that we don't have those properties annexed by legal instrument, and now we're asking you to describe them so we can go out and go through that process and attempt to do that. And I would say, you know, based off of the way that the law reads, and we could reach out to, you know, LMA and City Attorney Association, we need to do for assistance with this, but, you know, the value build mindset might not be the best way to go with this on the legal side, because while you might want to file one petition to do all of this work, we need to be mindful of the fact that each property that you're seeking to annex, you've got to have a certain percentage of the voters and a certain percentage of the assessed property value, and just without looking into it further, I'm not sure how you would do that, other than on a per property basis. It probably could be done in one suit, but I don't know that it would, I don't know that you could maybe combine them all, we just have to look into it, that's a legal question.
So, I guess I'm trying to figure out, so how, who hired, I know the city hired, how long has Messenger actually been working for the city?
Long as I, I think his grandfather, then his father, and then his.
Okay. I don't know, if it's that, if it's an issue with the surveyor, I don't know him personally, I really don't, but it may be something to get, get his fresh eye on. I didn't realize his family had been the one doing the boundaries. Uh, I didn't realize his family had been the one doing the boundaries. Um, but it may be, and it really good idea to get some fresh eyes on him.
And I, I think that's what the council needs to decide tonight. How do you guys want to go forward? Do you want to go out for requests for qualifications by the, other surveyors? Or, you know, you want to save Messenger? It's up to you all, yes sir.
Okay, this is my next question. Has Mr., who, who was the last one that drew maps for the city of Tolu? Who's the last person? Who's the last person that drew the maps for the city of Tolu? Messenger, okay. He's drawn all the maps for the city of Tolu?
Yes.
So, uh, Attorney Grady said we need to get with northeast Delta, right? To see, what does Census Bureau get their map from?
Yeah, he, I was echoing what you suggested earlier, that we, we determine maybe where the source of that map was. And maybe where the confusion came about, and make sure that there isn't some discrepancy that we all haven't resolved.
So has anyone reached out to northeast Delta?
No, have you?
No, uh, that, that's not for me.
So, um, let me just say.
And the reason why, let me finish. And, and the reason why I'm saying that, because for some reason we act like we don't know where the maps came from. So Mr. Messenger wrote a map, and then we say northeast Delta is the one that's first responsible. What does northeast Delta do for the city of Tolu?
Let me say this, the maps that were done that went with that ordinance were done by North Delta.
And the, the issue that you would have, Councilman Wells, is no matter where the source of the map is. And, and I, I want to make sure you understand this, because I, I do think it's important to get that information, because it's helpful. But if map isn't connected to a legal instrument, a deed, an act of donation. Um, in the court courts office, then title to that property is not currently vested in the city of Tolu area.
So in other words, every map, so that even we're running for office, and you understand that's correct. If those maps that northeast Delta has been drawing for us for a long time. If those maps are not accurate, because each time they drew a map for us, they have legal descriptions of where everything begins and ends. I, I, I don't, I don't understand it. It has where every district begins and where it ends, what it all encompassed within each district. But that's how we determine how far we go to solicit votes for office. So if Mr. Messenger has a conflict, why hasn't we, why haven't we reached out to the federal government? To northeast Delta and to Mr. Messenger, and we have all of them here, totally different. Have a meeting with all of them here and ask all them to bring their maps here. So we can see, because see, I already know now, Mr. M- Mr. Messenger understand what's supposed to happen, what's not supposed to happen. They understand, no matter how y'all keep talking about it, he understands. They understand what's supposed to be in and what we don't want in there. They know it. So I think we need to get, find out where the Census Bureau get the map from. What type of, what, what type of description that northeast Delta had, they ordered to draw the maps they drew? Because they have to have some type of legal descriptions. And we just saying, Mr. Messenger said it, it's not in this map, it's not enough. We're saying, because one person says, that's not in there, that's not enough.
Well, the problem is more complicated than that, Councilman Wells.
That's what we're saying.
So you're suggesting, and, and I'm, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Messenger, he can certainly do that. Um, the abstracting services that were performed, um, and reviewed by Attorney David Doughty. And by Mr. Messenger, and by what's currently in our tax assessor's office. That's, that's where the issue comes up.
I understand, I promise you that.
And I, and I agree with you that, you know, we need to get to the source of that. But we, we know, because there, there has not been an annexation process that's been followed. That as to Kelly's apartments, there has not been an annexation. And that, that, that just needs to be legally done in order to accomplish that goal.
Right, and see, see, that, that, that's the thing, that, that's my biggest point right there. Because right now, w- we, we are going on word of mouth, we're saying there's no legal descriptions for these areas to be inside of city limits. But the Census Bureau had to get the information from somebody. They didn't just fall out the sky and say, well, Keller's apartments should be included in the city of Tolu boundaries. So we're saying, because Mr. Messenger said it's not in his map. It's not part of the city. I, I think that's ludicrous. We should try. Can, can I, can, can I fini-, can I finish? Miss, you're saying, if Mr. Messenger says it's not in his map.
No, that's not what I said.
That, that's what the letter said, that's what Mr. Doughty said, Mr. Messenger said it's not in his map.
No, he said it's, it's not part of the city boundaries because it hasn't been annexed, it's not, it's not been annexed anywhere in the court records.
Okay.
That's why it's not part of the city.
You're still saying the exact same thing I said. Mr. Messenger said it's not in the city, because it's not in his map. Okay, how can you try to work with it? Mr. Messenger said that, he said that Keller is not in the city limits. But we have to have legal descriptions. The Census Bureau had to have a map with legal descriptions saying northeast, west, and south of where they had to go. So let's get everybody to the table, not just Mr. Messenger, not just northeast Delta, let's contact the federal government.
Ms. Jackson? I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson was first.
Rather jealous that we, they have what we sent them. I concur with, um, Mr. Wilson, Councilman Wilson, first. There is information that I acquired that Kelly's apartment was once in the city. So in the census, so someone's not doing a correct abstract. Which same thing as the title search, you want to call it. Um, that previous council had been voted on that. And the Census Bureau just doesn't, they don't just get these, these maps out of thin air. Those maps are sent over from departments, municipal departments, from municipal to state departments. Over to Census Bureaus. So, uh, and that's how the Census Bureaus do their, their counting for, uh, different funding. So, you know, I'm not sure, maybe you know, Mr. Old, when, when, when that, uh, those apartments was built. The land and.
Not Kelly's, no.
Somebody has to know, or have a map of, of the land. When it was originally brought into the city. It, it, it has to be there, because the Census Bureau does not have information. That they just give a municipal municipality. And ju- where you say, oh, these people used to be voted, need voted in, into this municipal election. Or they outsided in, you know, in the parish election. So even the parish map shows different from what you even saying, Attorney.
So, um, Mr. Wilson, I, I want to be clear, I have not abstracted, nor have I performed maps, nor have I been asked to abstract. So I'm, I'm providing simply the information on how we need to move forward with the annexation. Based off the information that I have provided to you.
You, you made a statement that, that, that had, that the previous attorney. Did abstracts. So if that's the case, I would, I would like a public request to get the, the, the bill. Of that service that was done by.
Messenger.
No, by Attorney Doughty.
Doughty.
Doughty, because that, that would, that, that will say a lot. If you, if he, if he, if he rented that service, he should have gotten paid for the service. Because we talking about this large piece of abstract that he has to render to the city, am I correct? And that, that should be, i- i- it's not, it's not a small.
Yeah, it was, he, he presented, um, shortly before he left, he stood right there and presented.
I was here, I have it on video, and he never presented, he, he's, he's never presented abstract. He's never presented maps. His only, only thing he presented was a letter. To the, to, to each council member stating what, what, what was to be done. And he also stated at that time, he also stated at that time, that Kelly's apartment was in. The city limits.
I think it shows on one, the map, and it shows on the, the map that goes to the, well, the maps, it doesn't go to the state. The state told me that they had every map that we generated now.
It caused a confusion now, Mr. Old. Public record, public request, finding the, the bill. And the council file to the previous attorney, where he didn't render those services, that's no problem.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hold, hold on just one second, so to make sure that we can get off the label in this, and we know what we want to do. First of all, Mr. Wilson, I'm going to ask for your public records request, if you'll fill out the paperwork. Okay, and we'll get that done. So, let's, let's chop this into a couple different pieces here. First of all, um, I agree with Councilman Wells, if you guys want to, we can ask Mr. Messenger, we can ask, uh, Doug. And we can reach out to the Justice Department, see if we can get it on here. Is everyone in agreement with that?
And also.
Okay, hold, hold on, sir, hold on, just one second. Everyone is in agreement with that, okay? The second part of this is, do you guys want to wait until that conversation is had? Before you make a decision on how you want to go forward?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, okay? Okay, everybody's okay with that? All right. So we've agreed that we're going to ask those three entities to come to the next meeting, or whenever they can come. Coordinate it so that they can all be here, and then after that information is provided to you all, then you guys will make a decision on how you want to go forward. Okay, Councilwoman, you have.
Okay, then, then also we need to bring all of the maps that we voted on, for reportioning. Since, I'll say nineteen eight, nineteen eighty. So we should, we should have several maps that have been voted on every ten years. We should have some maps to show changes. We should also have legal descriptions to go along with those maps. Because I remember, I was a little boy, Keller's apartment was a part of the city of Tolu. So, because I remember one time, there was no such thing called Richmond, yes it was. There was, there was a place called Richmond, but now it isn't, so how did that come into existence? So I think we should go back to a long time to see where all the maps are. And Mr. Messenger made it comes, his grandfather wrote the jewel maps, then he took all of them. So, so.
Okay, one more question. Northeast Delta, what is that? Is that a state entity?
So it's North Delta Regional Plan.
North Delta Regional, they're state, is that a state entity, or?
It's federal, it's North Delta Regional Planning.
Authority.
Okay.
It's what?
North Delta Regional Planning Authority.
Second question, Chicago Street, are you all agreeing that Chicago Street is a part of the city?
Based on the census map, is what Mr. Um, Maggie said.
But census, yeah, we, we, yeah, so we have to check it out.
But, but he was, but he was allowed to vote though. So that mean, in order. But in order, see, that, that's why, that, that's, that's a mess.
But, yeah.
There's no, there, there's no way I can vote in a city election and not get shit in Texas. So, so that, that's why, see, there's a game that's being played.
Something not right there.
It's hanging play.
But y'all said the state said they could vote.
That's the right of the city council.
I remember that, but I didn't even think about where he lived, but y'all said the state authorized that, is that what I'm saying?
Yes, he's a lot of the on the ballot. He has to submit your letters, uh, uh, for candidacy.
But we don't have anywhere where Chicago Street is actually annexed. Because like I said, I lived there forever.
I have no opinion on that. I'm not researching, so I don't tell you.
And I think it was a check that it wasn't annexed.
Ho- hold on, guys, so.
It does not have, listen, I understand this, listen, so we keep saying annex.
One second, Councilman Wells. Let's not speculate, y'all, okay? Let's not do that, okay? Bring your votes in, find out what's happened before, sure, if there's paperwork behind it, then it happened. If there's no paperwork behind it, then it probably didn't happen, but there's no sense in us continuing to speculate on it tonight.
No, no, I wasn't trying to speculate, I was just, I was just asking, what was the, the, the city's position on Chicago Street? That I was, I'm, I'm not.
That we have some people saying it's in, some people saying it's not.
So that's, that's, that is a war, huh? And then the last thing.
Not only Chicago Street, but that whole area.
The Compress, what they call the Compress. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, that, most of the Compress, to my knowledge.
That is not, uh, the Compress is not in the boundary.
It is not.
So I think we, we both.
So we were voting in the Compress area, not to be.
Everyone, okay, we have made a decision on how we're going to move forward, okay? Come in, okay, and then we're going to decide how we're going to move forward, so we can get everything done correctly.
Okay, we have a little second question.
I have one last, uh, point, um, to clarify, uh, I guess I was going to take her back with Messenger. About his grandfather and his father, is that what we're saying, the grandfather, father, and end? Is that what we're saying? I think the city needs to be very mindful that we don't allow private entities to just pass duties on public.
That's what's going on.
The city, yeah, I think that's something you all need to consider, y'all think somebody else needs to consider.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, I, I, I want to address, uh, Attorney Jackson's comment, what she said about Chicago Street. If Chicago Street was not in the city of Tolu's boundaries, boundaries, an individual would not have been allowed to run for that position. Would not have been allowed.
Well, the thing is, you got the annex property into the city, actually, I know you all don't want to accept.
No, 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 this is a question, let me, let me show you something. See, we, we keep saying annexation. See, if it's already inside the city of Tolu about it, let me finish, let me finish. See, what we have done for so long, we allow people by word of mouth. To tell us that certain places were not in the city of Tolu's boundaries. We never questioned them, because they say I'm not in, we allow them to go with it. So when Mr. Bagby actually challenged and asked the state of Louisiana, whether or not he could run in a municipal election. They told him, yes. So what, what, what we got to understand is this, we have to stop allowing people to tell us word of mouth something is not there. So, that's what I'm saying. So just for someone to say Chicago Street has not been in the city. An individual cannot run for office in a municipal election unless they're part of the city district.
But how did the state establish that? Did we, did anybody ever look into that?
It'd be because the state has the maps that we send in. I'm going to take, so the state has the maps, because the fact that I talked to, I can't think of name from the, uh, federal government. She said, the maps that they have access to comes from the city of Tolu. The federal government says the maps that they have access to comes from the city of Tolu. That's uploaded to the Secretary of State's website that they have access to. So everything that they have, they don't just pull it from nowhere. So in order for the Secretary of State to say Mr. Bagby was a legal, a legal, a legally could run for city council. Means that Chicago Street is in the city of Tolu.
Okay, then why is the city not, and I have property, I don't want y'all taxing it.
But he did.
Why is this the city? Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I know what y'all do that, but seriously, if, if we saying that's true. Let's go with that premise, that everything you're saying is right, the state is right, then why is the city taxing, uh, uh, property? We don't get our taxes.
Be, 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 because a lot of times it depends on who is going to affect. Or who does not want to pay city taxes, like we're saying with Kelly's. The owner of Kelly's say he does not want to be in the city of Tolu. So he's paying taxes to the parish, has no problem with it. But he does not want to give, uh, who, he or she, whatever he is, does not want to give any taxes to the city of Tolu. So I don't want to be a part of the city, because I don't want to pay all that money in taxes to the city. It comes down to dollars and cents. So I give my money to the parish, but not to the city. Chicago Street is in the city, I can vote in the city election, but we're not getting taxation, we're not getting taxes.
Okay, so I think we have, uh, everybody is giving their thoughts on this, I think we know how we're going to move on this. Um, Mr. Wilson, you'll be the last question on this map, I'm sorry, the last comment on this map.
Well, you know, when you put discussion on here, it's, it should give, uh, you know, let us discuss it. And not rush through it, and I'm surprised, Madam Mayor, that you don't know about the, the maps and, and things.
What's your comment, sir?
I'm making my comment, so please stop cutting me off.
What is your comment, sir?
Don't dictate my conversation, please.
Go ahead, what's your comment?
All right, first of all, this, this, this tells me a lot about our city attorney. Our mayor, and those that voted for the, 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 uh. The other, the, the last map that we're talking about now. You, you, you guys have sat on this council, you didn't listen, you didn't go for information. Because, uh, Chicago Street over on the Compress was annexed. Has been annexed for many years. Go look at the map, and Mr. Bagby give you documentation on it as well. That, just as well as Kelly's apartment, and for many. And for many years, they said that it wasn't in the city. But when, when that, that information was founded, that's how all this stuff came about. And we sitting, we sitting over here going back and forward, fighting one person that's trying to move this, this area of Kelly's apartment and other areas of Madison Parish, um, Health Department, that's supposed to be in the city. All of that's in the same information that we had. And none of that has been come, has come out within, uh, uh, the, the city attorney's information. And to give that type of advice that the ordinance that was presented or filed into the courthouse is, is, is invalid or we're not moving on it, is ludicrous. It's absolutely pathetic that we will make these types of statements and look side eye when, when the information is over in the courthouse. And, and if the city is paying to get the information and the council have asked for the information and it hasn't been presented to the council and the, the, the interim mayor has, was here and received the same information that we have had for many, oh, I forgot, the interim mayor is not from Toluca. Rest my case.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is an update on the sale of the Coca-Cola building. Uh, so that's in the package, um, the draft ordinance that we got from Lamax to go ahead with the sale of this property. We've asked all of the council members to review the ordinance and provide their input to the attorney. We've given them a date to do that. Uh, I'd like to see, um, this ordinance potentially introduced, um, at one of our meetings in November so that we can move forward with the sale of this property. Yes, sir?
I have a question. Because for some reason, this, this council and this administration doesn't mind giving something away that belongs to the city without second guessing it. So, my question is, have the city reached out to Coca-Cola to see if they would invest any money to renovate one of their first bottling companies in the United States? Have we tried to contact Coca-Cola's headquarters?
Yes.
And what did they say?
Coca-Cola.
And do they think, right, they give us an email or some response?
So, Coca-Cola's philanthropy work now is water, water conservation, those sorts of things. I can tell you that they don't give money to bottling, uh, facilities. They don't even hardly help, well, not hardly. They don't even help the, uh, the person in Pittsburgh. So, no, I do not believe that their philanthropic efforts are going to give any money to help restore that.
Do they have an email conversation from there?
No, I had a phone call.
Right, a phone call. So, that there's no one, do you know who you talked to on that phone call?
It was months ago.
Okay, gotcha. So, so there, there's no documented proof of a conversation taking place? So, now, we have to stop that. And what I'm saying is, if, we're gonna reach out, I'm gonna reach out to him tomorrow morning if I go to the headquarters up there. Cause I really find it hard, I could be wrong, if I'm wrong, I say I'm wrong. But I find it hard to believe that one of the first bottling companies for Coca-Cola, that they wouldn't be interested in bringing it back to life. But I'm gonna reach out to him, I'm gonna make sure I do that. And to say you talked to someone and there's no, that's why I don't believe people just talk to you on the phone without sending you documentation. Just like you put that email conversation in with the people from the Macs. And all that conversation was not the entire conversation, was where it started from the nine o'clock, uh, email thread. So, we're so quick to say we're gonna sell something, but we're moving fast to save. And what is gonna be the return on our investment if we sell this thing? What kind of tax dollars are we gonna get from this company? Is this company zero tax dollars?
So, I think the, uh, invest, well, the return is going to be a blighted building.
We got blighted buildings all across the town.
Just one second, you ask what the return is, okay? A blighted building that's brought back up to historic standards. Another business here in our community, a business that has said that they would work with our local schools to bring the kids in to show business technology. I, you know, I, I, I.
Again, my question is this, would this business bring any tax dollars, sales tax, to the city of Toluca? Because the city of Toluca needs money to operate efficiently and effectively. So, are we, us go out to, reach out to several companies or have we already made an agreement with one particular company? Because what you're saying right now, that you already have your body in hand.
We haven't made any agreement with anything.
From what you say, you say this company's gonna do technology, they made an agreement with the school, they open schools?
What I said was what they came with this council.
You just see.
Listen, hold on, okay? We have a gentleman come in, he told everybody what they wanted to do, okay? So, that part right there is a fact.
No, what I'm saying is, are we gonna reach out to other companies or have we already made a decision?
Hold on just one second, okay? What we're going to do, what we have to do, if we sell this building, is advertise it for sale, okay? And put in that advertisement that what we're looking for is a company to put this building back into commerce. That's what we're going to do.
So, what we're gonna advertise this, because one time we said we're gonna bid, we're gonna set up a bid, is that not mistaken?
No.
You said, contact Lamax to see about the bid process for this project.
No, what I said was try to contact Lamax, okay, to help us put together the information to put it in the paper, okay?
Then you said an email, so what you said a bid.
Okay, alright.
So, now, what I'm saying, so where are we gonna advertise this particular sale of this building at?
It'll be in our local paper, it'll also go on the Lamax, um, site.
So, we're not gonna put it in the surrounding area newspapers, reach out?
But it is in the local paper.
Okay, so that lets me know right now what's happening.
Yes, sir. Do you have a question?
Yes. Want to present something to the council each member? We're interested in buying the building as well. If the city wants to sell a historical building that has historical, uh, which is a historical landmark, has historical registry, uh, you mentioned that the building was worth thirty, thirty-one thousand. We're willing to pay over appraisal value on it, forty thousand dollars. And we'll bring up, bring the building up to historical code. Now, to my understanding, uh, if I was the mayor or the council, uh, even if you're selling it to, to me or my firm or whomever, whomever else, the other gentlemen's that, that are trying to buy the, the, um, the, the building, uh, in my experience, that, that has always been, uh, historical guidelines. Uh, not something that we talk about, but something that is written in great detail that, uh, that is done throughout the United States of America. Uh, and when we're talking about this particular building here, uh, there are windows in there that, that, that's astronomical uh, to that building. And I don't believe, uh, that generally that the, the, the individuals that came uh, before the council or, um, could put that building back into its rightful state.
I respect for Mr. Wilson, if they're not here, I would ask that you not talk to another person. I respect for them not being here.
Correct. Uh, I, that's just my opinion, uh, Councilman Wells, and I have the right to that opinion, uh, just like anybody else. Uh, because the, the individual, one of the individuals, they called me, text me, uh, even thereafter with, with smart comments.
So, that's a private conversation, huh?
Yeah. But, uh, and I have nothing against the gentleman, actually, I went to school with one of the guys. But it shouldn't be a point where, uh, we're, we're trying to force a sale to, to family members or friendship, kinship, uh, we're trying to force a sale to, uh, those individuals. Uh, and I, I wasn't even thinking about, uh, buying this particular building, but I will because I understand the tax credits, the tax benefits that comes with it. And Madam Mayor, you say you didn't talk to, you talked to Coca-Cola. I talked to Coca-Cola as well. And, uh, the statement that you made, it wasn't told to me. I also talked with the state of Louisiana, uh, Lieutenant Governor's office. And there, there, there are things that, that could be done. Uh, you made the statement in the last council meeting about, uh, their historical help. Uh, that's just not true, uh, on, on those statements. And I, I will seriously, even, I will seriously counsel, I will seriously think about this, uh, of what you're doing with this particular property. Thirty-one thousand, forty thousand dollars that I'll be offering is paid when you can, you will be able to receive hundreds, even millions of dollars off this particular property. You just have to have the right, uh, plan, put it together, and restore the building, uh, to its rightful, rightful state. Now, I can't tell you what I would do with the building, uh, once it's restored. Uh, that's something I haven't thought about. Uh, I've, I've only thought about the sale and, and the buying the building and the, um, completing the building and what, what goes on thereafter. Uh, it is what it is. Even if I came back and restored the building and donated it back to the city, use it for, uh, whatever, community center, whatever, uh, we, we, we need to use it as. But go back to you, council.
Mr. Wilson, you're past your three minutes, sir, on this. Okay?
If I'm presenting, I'm presenting something.
You're not presenting. You're, you're speaking.
But I'm presenting.
Okay, hold on just one second. You're speaking under this item. Every item, you have three minutes to speak and you have, you're so past your time. We have your letter, we thank you for it. Yes, Ms. Jackson?
The only thing I would say is, if, if anyone wants to stop the sale of a building, let me say this, that's your right to do that, but you all need to come with concrete options to stop it. That's the only thing I'll say about that. Uh, that's not speaking generalities about what we think can happen. That's, I mean, it would be nice for us to have a building. I'm not saying it would, but let's come up with some concrete options if we say it's grand, see, let's come up with an actual grant we're saying we can apply for. Come up with concrete options for the building, instead of this, you know, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so where we are now on this, all of the council members have a copy of the, uh, proposed ordinance. You guys have been given the deadline to have any comments that you have on the ordinance back to the attorney. Uh, once she does that, she'll put everything together, we can take a look at it, and then we can go with the Macs to put it out, um, to see where we are. Yes, sir, Counselor.
Okay, if I reach out to Coca-Cola, which I am, okay? And they come and say that there's things that they can do to restore that building, will the city be interested in the restoration?
Yeah, I think we can look at anything. Absolutely.
Because I, I, I just don't want us to have our mindset on we're gonna sell this building to somebody and I understand you're saying applied properties. But my concern is, we, as a city, need money to provide services. We're going through a government shutdown, we don't know when that's gonna end. So, we're losing federal funding as of right now. So, I think that because we don't know how our government is gonna operate with, with our president, the state and the country right now. So, I think the city of Toluca needs to start looking at items that's gonna generate some type of tax that's gonna be a recurring financial investment to the city of Toluca. Uh, it is great to invest back into our kids, we take our luck, that's a great deal. But that alone is not gonna keep the city functioning. Cause just several months ago, we said we was in financial distress. So, we need to have a plan that's gonna generate some type of revenue from the city and not just give something away and don't get nothing in return. Yes, you may get a beautiful building, but we need money. Cause if, if they come to decide, you know, we stayed here long enough, we're gonna leave. Now, you have a beautiful building, just sit there. We have no money to venture away with. So, we won't gain anything. But if they restore the building, then they get all the tax breaks, the taxes sent, then they leave out a whole lot of money, we have nothing. And I begin to question, I'm not trying to stop a sale, but I'm gonna make sure we're getting the best thing for our buck. And then when we, when we start just rushing and trying to do something, we're gonna, what do we have investing this thing personally? Then we're trying to push it through. That's my biggest concern.
Okay, so, uh, at the next meeting, uh, we will, Counselor Wells will present the information that you got from Coca-Cola. Everybody else will give their, uh, information to the attorney prior to that.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Wilson, you've already had enough.
The law states as many times as any individual in this seat out here in public, as long as they have, you have to recognize them. That's, that's, that's what we mean, man.
You have been given three minutes.
But also the law states that whatever rules is gonna govern our meetings, it's supposed to be posted.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, you've been given three minutes to speak on this.
It doesn't, but the law, the law states.
We're now moving on to the next item.
The law states, if you bring in the laws.
Deny on the agenda, updating of the status of donation of a juvenile property and or cooperative endeavor agreement with the Madison Parish Library. Attorney, can you give us something on that, please?
Yes, so Danny Barrett is the attorney for the police jury. He has a copy of the draft cooperative endeavor agreement. Um, you all have a copy in your inbox as well. I've asked for some feedback from all of you and I've additionally asked Paul, Paul, the Lamax.
Do you have any questions?
I do. Yes, I, I need to know, why, why all of a sudden we using Lamax for everything? We actually, you, you, Ms. Daye said that she wanted Lamax to get involved in, in giving us a, a, a different quote on different appraisals. That's something that the council, the mayor, that's the mayor's job to go out, that's what the mayor get paid for. You don't, Lamax is just a supplement to what we do here in-house. And Lamax doesn't, it, it's an organization that the governor has, has, has put together, uh, to, to, for his good. And we gotta stop, we gotta stop doing these types of things, you know? By, by going with these, these, these different Lamax. Nobody in here knows anything about Lamax.
Was there any answer?
I have my three minutes. I'm getting more thoughts.
So, did I miss something? What we doing? We letting him?
Yeah.
I'm finishing my three minutes.
No, wait, that's not it.
That's not legal. You're talking, two guys have all been sitting there for three minutes, yeah.
Is there anything else? Okay, did anyone on the council have any comments?
No.
Anybody else in the audience have any comments? Okay, is there a timeline that we, maybe we can set so that we can get a definitive, um, source of movement on this?
On, um, sure, I can ask it to here if we can get news from outside Friday next week. Is that somebody's rule? A week to look at it?
Is that okay with everyone?
And, uh, I'd ask that any comments in the council would be there at the same time. Is that fair? Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. Do you have any public comments?
Yes.
Yes. Um, my public, I won't be long. But my public comment is towards, uh, Mr. Scott. Um, I'm your constituent. I live in District One. And I'm just be honest, District One is ridiculous. Nothing is being done in District One. Um, you have a few properties over there that's grown and grown, you have people dumping furniture and different things around. Um, the roads over there is horrible. I went down a road one day and I nearly messed up my bumper. Now, it used to be patching of roads. We used to have people coming and cleaning up lots. I know it's a process that you have to go about with cleaning up the different lots. But some of those lots over there is they owned by the city of Toluca. And I'm gonna be honest with you, if they're owned by the city of Toluca, why the city is not cleaning them up? I would stated that the property that was across from my house is owned by the city of Toluca. If it's owned by the city of Toluca, why have they cleaned it, cleaned it up? I called, I called mayor, I talked to you about it. Um, I talked to you also about this week, about that furniture over there that's been dumped over there that has not been. Um, I talked to you also about this week, about that furniture over there that's been dumped over there, that has not been picked up yet. I am very concerned, I'm a twenty-one years old, I'm twenty-one years old. And I'm getting involved in this, and I've been sitting here for going on four, five years. And Mr. Scott, you have not said one thing about your district. You have not gave not one concern, and it's not, I'm not attacking you. But you have not gave one concern about the district of District One. And we voted you in, we voted you in. And I feel that you should not just be sitting there, sometimes sleeps, sometime on the phone, or sometime not just paying attention, you not, um, asking any questions. And as a constituent, I feel that I did not get what I voted for. And I, you, sir?
You're entitled to that.
Yes, I'm gonna talk it to my own opinion. But I feel that you have to, have to start engaging in something. We got an election coming up. If you wanna be re-elected, I advise you start doing something now.
Sir, and you done us a few that too. Two roads that go from all the way from Johnson Street, all the way to the bayou that has been done in your, your district.
When was it? What was the date?
Last two years.
It was two years ago.
In the last two years.
We need something done now. We need, we don't need anything. We don't need anything to start happening once election cycles start coming about. We need things to happen as soon as you take the oath until the last day of the administration. That's what we need. And I am encouraging you to please start. We need it. We had the governor to come through our district, that was District One, that the governor was at the water company. And if he would have seen how bad our district looked, I am so embarrassed. I yield.
You got lots of duty.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Um, I'm gonna give you a call tomorrow, okay, I'm not sure why they didn't come over there. I will tell you that they are working hard, we have had a lot of lots cleaned up, um.
All over town.
All over town. Um, so we'll have to see what they're doing in District One. We'll tell you that, you know, Ford Street's been be done over there.
Yes, sir.
I know it's, I know it's not what you want.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wanna.
Yeah, it's not just.
You know, mayor, I, I get what you're saying, but I, I feel that if you are an elected official, no matter what district you live in, you should be concerned about your district, you should be out there. See, over there where he lives, that his road is repaired. Our roads is not. And you have to take time, I know it takes time, you don't get everything done in your full term. But something have to be done. You have to have some interest with your constituents within your district. And so that's, that's why I voiced my concern.
Thank you so much, sir. Anyone else with any public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The reason that that road was done was we got a brand new hospital. The hospital said when they got through, because they damaged the road, that they would fix the road, they got through, and then we got the hospital. That's what, one of the cities of Tallulah paid for that, the hospital paid for that. Okay, so, it wasn't anything to do, Joe K. Scott.
Yes, sir, I understand, totally understand. But I still say you should engage in your district.
But see, that, that's interesting, that's interesting.
Councilman Wells, hold on just one second.
Ms. Daye talking out of turn, he was, I heard her speaking, and I started shaking my head, he was about to, they were talking out of turn, but I didn't acknowledge. Ms. Daye wasn't about to speak, and then the jocks started.
Ms. Jackson was recognized both time. I think what you're saying.
At the time, it was.
Okay, mister, Councilmember, thank you, okay? I think what you're echoing is what a lot of people in our council say about their, their districts and the work that needs to be done, okay? We hear you, I promise you, you know, we hear you, and we know it's not just District One, we know it's all over. Um, but thank you for, you know, sharing your comments, okay? Yes, sir.
Okay. I have some concerns with, with my area. Cause I sent a list of lights, uh, uh, some streets. Griffin, Hope, and I said living, I think I'm in this Gator Street. That there is no lights. And then my constituents talk about how complaining, how dark it is. And I sent that to the, to the mayor about almost a month or two, about a month or two ago. And those lights have still not been put up yet. One councilman, he told all of us to submit to your listing lights, uh, streets that we have lights to be replaced, that was about a month or two ago. Nothing is happening. So, my constituents come and they tell me, uh, Councilman Wells, it's dark over here, we're gonna get some lights. I said, well, I don't think I can just submit my request to the city. And, and nothing is happening in this standpoint. So, that's amazing concern that my constituents on Hope Street have, and Griffin Street becomes a street lighting.
Okay.
And also, who determines what properties will be demolished? Do we have a process that we do that?
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Sims is working with different property owners, um, there's not a system that he's going by. I think he's working with different holders and those who are.
See, you know, I, 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 I'm with this, I go to different city council meetings. And, and what they do is, the city council, they come to the meetings, well, list the things that they want to get done in their districts. And then that's why I asked a while back, if I have a department heads to come to the meetings, particular department heads. So, we could talk about different concerns that people may have. You know, say, well, in District One, I, I got a lady, um, Ms. Jackie Grayson, I'm gonna get her asking, I, I said this two years ago about a water leak in front of our house in the ditch. I gave them a message, I sent you all the emails, that leak is still going. It has not been addressed. And this before Magnolia and all of them came into play. So, that leak has been going up for almost two years now, I'm gonna resend the email again, so you all say, you know, man, I haven't resend it. Cause that leak has been going on almost two years in my area. Then I was specifically calling the evening, said, uh, there's a concrete that's broken up by Magnolia at seven oh one little Chestnut Street. And said waters coming out that thing, and said there was no yellow tape put down or anything. And said a lady complained about falling in the hole. And the lady said she reached out to you and regards to that particular situation, said she got no response, I don't know if it's true or not. Uh, Ms. Lea, come in, she says she reached out to you, said you never respond, I don't know if it is, see, or whatever, I'm just saying. So, I don't know.
Right before this meeting.
Okay, I'll just say she, I'm just relaying what was given to me, cause she my constituent. And, uh, Timothy, I wanna make sure, cause you had asked me about my open meetings violation complaint. You told me, get that information, I gave it to you, you said you're gonna do a story on it. There's been a return on that open meetings complaint. And there was an open meeting violation.
So, they got back with you about it?
Yes, with the man, their man and the council, all happened. And they said that because she self-reported, they didn't hold her at fault, but they said that that was a violation.
I think that's a gross interpretation of that, but we'll get you the copy of the letter, you can make your own.
I'm gonna give you all the information, you can say, go do a media story.
Okay.
And so they said that because she self-reported on October the second, my letter was September twenty-fourth. So, I'm gonna give you all the information. So, they said that there was a violation because, because you took remedial steps of self-reporting. Cause you sent a self-reporting, they sent it to you, but you put it in there, I asked the guy forward. They said that there was, it would have been a violation, but because of self-reporting and the remedial steps that was taken, they didn't find them at fault or, or take any further action against them. But it was a violation. So, there's a lot of growth, I'm gonna give it to you, uh, so you can have it, make sure you run it in the paper. So, there was a violation. And I wanna make sure that runs in the paper. But from now on, when I know somebody's done it wrong, I'm gonna be quiet. He just sent it in. Look, when I said, I told you, they came back a week later, you sent your, uh, self-reporting, you asked for an opinion. Then on October the second, you sent in a self-reporting violation report.
That's because they sent me the information back and said I hadn't done the complaint. Well, let me, let me say this, okay? Whether there was a mistake made or not, okay? What I did was I acknowledged it, okay? And I took the steps to self-report myself. It's not the mistake, it's how you handle the mistake. That's, that's how I operate. Anybody else can operate however they operate, okay? So, okay, I do not need your comments, okay? Okay, alright? What they did was, you guys can all read the letter, I believe, uh, we'll make sure that it gets to the newspaper, I'm sure you will do it. I self-reported, okay? I self-reported, Councilman Wells sent in his information, then they sent me back, uh, the complaint form because that has to go with the self-reporting, and they have cleared that, and they have said, we're done with that issue, so.
What they say about violation, what they say about violation?
What they, you can read the letter, everybody can read the letter, okay? Alright?
Say it for me.
Right, so, that's where we are on that, okay? If there was a mistake made or whatever, I'm willing enough to stand up to it, I'm willing enough to self-report, and that's what happened, and that is a done deal.
What, what happened after they received my information, she came back a week later, so somebody advised her to do a self-report.
No, sir, what they did was they came back and I did not have to complain. And in their letter, they said you presented no more information, so, that's a done deal, folks, okay? However you want to run with that, it is a done deal.
It was a violation.
Alright, are there any more public comments? Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, first of all, I wanna say you did self-report from the very beginning because you stood in the council chamber and said that you, you didn't care, and your word is your word, and you can ask to, to end the meeting or whatever. Secondly, the city looks a mess. So, that's the, the, the mayor's job on a day to day is to make sure that the, the city is clean, uh, operations is, is done properly, and that's something that we haven't done, and I'm man enough to say, uh, those words, uh, that the city looks a mess, and the job that we're doing is absolutely horrible, uh, for the citizens of Zulu. We have no economic development plan, we have no, uh, uh, plan to move our city forward, and we can sit there all day long not acknowledging what I'm saying, that's fine. The people, in several months, the people has a choice to make. And that is their choice, whether they wanna keep you or whether they wanna put somebody else in that seat. And I think it's, it's, it's absolutely insane to hear a council member, uh, tell a constituent that it's, it's, that's your opinion. When your district look like hell, it's not their opinion, it's everybody's opinion. And it's your job to go out and help the citizens clean up your district. That's what you were elected to do, to help the citizens. We talk about funding, how many times each council member have gone out, researched funding on their own? Besides letting the mayor, uh, bring something up to them. You have a job to do, and that's a part of your job, to go out and look for funding, create opportunity for citizens to make sure we move in our city in a, in a, in a, in a, a new direction, a forward direction. We can't keep doing it this way. And as long as we continue to do and sit like a knot on the law, our city gonna continue to look like it's looking, being operated like it's being operated, until we wanna make changes in our districts and for the whole being of our citizens and the city. Economic development is very important. And we talk about the, 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 uh, the closure of the government as if we were asking, as, as if we were calling USDA on a regular basis to.
Your three minutes.
As if we were, do you have me on time?
They're motion to adjourn.
Show, show me your timer.
Motion to adjourn.
Show me the timer, we're three minutes. Yeah, she adjourned it before you said second, that's a violation.